Meeting of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners meet this evening. So, welcome. And we will begin the meeting with a moment of prayer from Roger Deaton, our Commissioner.
Thank you Chairman. Will you bow your heads and pray with me? Heavenly Father, we come before you today in humility and faith. We thank you for all you have given us and the many blessings in our lives. We ask for your guidance and strength. Show us the way and fill us with courage and wisdom. Help us remember your love and grace and to be faithful in your service to you. Give us the patience and understanding to face like challenges with grace. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you Commissioner. Next, as most of you know Nathan Bird will be leaving us and this is his last board meeting here in Livingston County. So I've asked him to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Bird.
I put allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Nathan. Entertain a motion for the approval of this evening's agenda. Roll call first.
We need a call.
Yes. Okay. You're the third person that's joining the other side.
Would you like me to start?
Uh, yes, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Elsman.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Sample.
Here.
Commissioner Happy Gary.
Here.
Commissioner Drake.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Fiani.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Mr. Chair, a form is present with all members' account.
Thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved. Fiani.
Second, Sample.
Moved by Commissioner Fiani and supported by Commissioner Sample. Are there any comments or additions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Uh, next is the employee recognition section of this evening's meeting. And our, uh, we are recognizing this evening, shephardy Sheriff Deputy Lonnie Chapman and Commissioner Jay Drake will make that presentation. Commissioner.
Deputy Fromson, please.
He's wanted to say a little long time, huh?
I have a certificate of recognition, which is proudly presented to-
Commissioner, can you please use a microphone? We can hardly hear you on Zoom. Thank you.
I have a certificate of recognition proudly presented to Deputy Lonnie Chapman. Livingston County Board of Commissioners acknowledges their appreciation to Deputy Chapman for the heroic and lifesaving actions he displayed on April 10, 2023. While on patrol, Deputy Chapman noticed a truck moving over 90 miles an hour on Byron Road in Howell. In the time it took him to pull his car around to stop the truck, it had already made a turn onto Ma Road, setting up a large cloud of dust. As he followed, the dust cleared and he found the truck had crashed into a tree and was in flames. Acting quickly, he ran towards the truck and was able to help the passenger out without issue. As he returned to the truck, he found the driver was badly injured and his foot was stuck under the dashboard. Without hesitation, he got into the burning car to free the driver's foot before dragging him to safety. Witnesses on the scene say the flames grew higher as Chapman removed the driver to safety. When EMS and fire first responders arrived, the truck was totally engulfed in flames. Driver is then transported to the University of Michigan Hospital with a broken ankle and leg injuries. There is no question that Deputy Chapman's selfless actions saved the life of the driver. When faced with a dangerous situation with a potential for great personal harm, his recognition of the severity of the emergency, immediate action, and courageous rescue directly resulted in the preservation of life. His instinct to place his own life in jeopardy for the sake of a stranger highlights his unwavering dedication to the protection of our community. Therefore, let it be known that the Livingston County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes and expresses their utmost appreciation to Deputy Lonnie Chapman for his valiant service. We are deeply grateful and honored for the service you performed.
Chapman, would you come up here with us please?
Sure.
I just want to say, like, Jesus too bad.
How's my hair?
Same as always.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As always, thank you. Next, we will have Commissioner Frank Sample. Recognize Dan Lorigan, a lead probation officer for his work in, uh, here in Livingston County. Dan, would you come up please?
Appreciate the opportunity to recognize your employee recognition.
Commissioner, we can hardly hear you. Can you please? Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Dan is longtime employee of Livingston County. In fact, next week marks his 32nd year, each of them in service to the probation department and Livingston County's communities. Dan first started with the county in 1991 as a probation officer in job share situation, shortly thereafter earning a full-time position. Moved up to the position of lead probation officer in 2016, where he has been excelling ever since. As lead probation officer, Dan takes on more complex cases and matters functioning as a leader to other probation officers and assuming duties of the chief probation officer when needed. The lead probation officer performs investigations, interviews, reports, assessments, and other screenings necessary to provide a court a solid recommendation of case deposition. We also know there is much more to this role and Dan handles it all with passion and respect for the job. Marissa Lutz, the District Court Administrator, spoke these words about Dan. "As District Court's lead probation officer, Dan has never wavered in his commitment to hard work and serving the citizens of Livingston County with dignity and respect. Dan's determination to inspire, motivate, and encourage all he comes in contact with is highly recognized by leadership and his peers. His willingness to help his fellow employees in the time of need is exceptional. I'm very proud of Dan for receiving this well-deserved recognition." The winning nomination was submitted by Dan's supervisor, who saw extraordinary service being provided on a daily basis and thought Dan deserved some recognition for it. The nomination reads, "Dan has been a huge supporter to his coworkers and the general public. He is always looking out for his coworkers and offering assistance in many ways, most recently due to some miscommunication. Defendant was waiting for a pre-sentence investigation to be conducted, but the officer that was supposed to do the interview was not informed and he would have then left. Dan stepped in and conducted the hour-long interview, wrote the follow-up report for the court that was required to be turned in, all in the matter of just days. He got the job done. He is truly an amazing coworker, offers great advice, and genuinely cares about the defendants he supervises and the people he works with." Congratulations, Dan. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Good job.
You are still good.
Thank you. I don't like the way that came out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Dean. The next presentation will be made by Commissioner Wes Nakaguri to Heather Smothers, Deputy Probate Register. Heather, would you step up please?
I got both microphones close together here. So it's quite an honor to be presenting to you Heather Smothers. She was one of our recognized employees from external nominations. I want to read you a little bit about Heather. Heather has been employed with Livingston County for nearly 26 years. Currently, she serves as a deputy probate register. She started out as a clerk in the sheriff's office. She transferred to the clerk's office, then the circuit court clerk, and finally in 2010, she moved over to the probate court as a deputy register, where she's been providing outstanding customer service ever since. As a deputy probate register, Heather is the point person at the court for mental health cases and manages the estates and trust files. She readily shares her vast knowledge of probate court with new employees and builds strong customer service-focused relationships with attorneys, community mental health, and vulnerable community members coming to do business with the probate court. Her length of service with the county and the court are invaluable strength and added value in Heather's role. So I want to talk a little bit about the nominations. These were external nominations from people that the probate court and Heather served. So, um, one is said, quote, "Heather is a kind, patient, informed, and helpful. A lot of probate clerks are very quick to dismiss questions or provide assistance. Heather is the opposite and it is very appreciated." And then there's a, another nomination from an attorney that, uh, is served by Heather in the probate court, quote, "Always courteous, even in difficult circumstances. Heather knows her area of probate law and its administration in some very difficult areas. Constant study of this area of the law is required, and I find that Heather's knowledge of the law and its administration to be excellent and superior to many attorneys." Lastly, she is- That was another attorney saying that. Uh, lastly, she is extremely polite and helpful. And with that, I want to turn it over to Judge Miriam Kavanaugh because she had a few words to say also. Here's your certificate.
I won't make you cry. I just want to just say here today that, um, this award has been a long time coming because Heather is nominated nearly every quarter. And it's been a running joke in our office that one of these times she's going to win it. And, um, this quarter she did, and it is well-deserved. You know, Heather, the nominations are correct. Heather regularly has more knowledge and experience than many of the practicing attorneys in our court. And she could correct them when they get it wrong. But it's more about the person that she is that I think is the most valuable piece to our court. We, the probate court deals with majority of the time are families and people in crisis, right? They've suffered an accident, they're carrying current ill parent or a young child, um, that they need guardianship of, or just all different sorts of tragic and life-changing events when people come to our court. And Heather is always, every single day, kind and patient and empathetic, and she just really makes people feel at ease when they are trying to navigate a process that they have no idea what they're doing and doing it under such stressful and difficult circumstances. And Heather just is such a pleasure to work with, and I think I can say on behalf of our whole department, um, that they just, we just love her and she just, is just deserving of this award.
And now to the part where we start spending money. Sure that's going to help everybody here, so. I didn't get any laughs out of that one. Everybody thought that was very funny. It was a joke. Chair will entertain a motion to accept and put, place on file those items received in correspondence. Motion Deaton. Support Gross. Been moved and supported. Are there any comments or questions? Therefore, take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed as well? So we'll, that passes. Item eight is a call to the public. We have, uh-
We have 18 cards, Mr. Chair. First is Nancy McGuire from Brighton Township with Ben Tasic on deck.
Thank you Nancy. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Nancy McGuire. I'm an ID doc that's retired, also worked in clinical research and anti-infectives and drug development at Park Davis Warner Lambert. I wanted to address the issue about the emerging threat funding and review vaccine biologicals and emergency use authorization and how our rights are or were impacted adversely during the issues with the mandates. Vaccine development takes years and years, and it's only after doing a phase three, it's launched into the public, and that's when you see adverse events. If there are a lot of things like deaths and disability, it's taken off the market. With the COVID vaccines, they were not vaccines. They were gene therapy, medicinal products. So there's additional regulatory that you have to do with shedding and distribution. It was experimental. There were minimal safety testings. And remember the concept of warp speed. You don't do drug development and vaccines in warp speed. This is the first time this technology has been used in human beings, and we don't know the long-term consequences. It's very unclear. The emergency use authorization was actually the second emergency use authorization in history, the first being anthrax and the military being mandated to take the vaccine. The EUA would not have been allowed because there were papers that suggested that drugs like hydroxychloroquine and chloroquine were effective at inhibiting SARS as a potent inhibitor. Henry Ford additionally did a study, uh, which proved in their in-patients with hydroxychloroquine to reduce mortality, uh, yet that was put by the side and they were prevented from doing an outpatient study. The EUA may allow good manufacturing practices to be waived or limited. So there's problems with bioavailability, uh, quantity of the drug in the vaccine. There's issues with contamination. So there were significant risk-benefit issues, and early on, there were increased risks, including death and disability, myocarditis, which is not a benign process. It's unusual and not normal for young children to die in their sleep from myocarditis. So it's not benign. When I think of myocarditis, I think about heart transplantation, and so 1 to 8% of patients are transplanted. This vaccine or gene therapy did not decrease infectivity, did not decrease transmission. People still went to the ICU and were on ventilators. The mandates are unethical. Drug companies knew of severe adverse events early on, but that was not told to the public. I myself, okay, um, went through the, uh, looking at the VAERS. So that would be part of the informed consent. They did not get the informed consent. Besides, it is against the law to force experimental products on people. Title 21 U.S. Code 360 TB3 E1A says the option is to accept or refuse administration of the product and to use alternatives if they want to. The products should be delineated as, as to benefit and risk. So people should not be mandated, they should, they should have a right to accept or not to accept. So it's unlawful to force. And you as a person that's vaccinated incur all the risks. The drug companies, the people that inject, everybody are called covered persons, and they are not liable. You are liable for any risks you incur and any losses you incur. I just wanted to share that with you guys.
Yes, in order, I think the person has spoken for more than three minutes.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think that, although I don't think we should do it now, but at some point, if we have a further discussion, this would be an excellent person to come because she's actually done research and that sort of thing. So I appreciate, uh, I appreciate this. If we're going to have, at some point have a further discussion, we need to have her come.
Next up is Ben Tasic from Howell. Eric Casey from Whitmore Lake on deck.
Thank you Ben. And we have a lot of people that want to speak and call to the public this evening. So if you would, make sure you try to stay-
I will make it very short. Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
My name is Ben Tasic. I live at 3492 Lakewood Shores Drive in Howell, District 6, and I want to thank the board for all the wonderful work that you do to make our county the premier county in Michigan. And I say that without any reservation. I've lived here for the last 25 years. I enjoy the growth that we have seen, and I'm looking forward to even more growth and the quality of life is just the best. To make, the reason I'm here this evening is to talk very briefly about, I, I'm here on behalf of Livingston County Transportation Coalition. And I'm here, uh, I, I looked at the Livingston County Transit Master Plan that you're all familiar with, and that master plan came out March 5th, 2019. On page 22, uh, there are 13 points of action that they have recommended, and this, these points of action are going to take place over one to two-year period, three to five-year period, and five years and, and above. And we know that COVID affected this plan, no question about it. But one of the things that we're really in need right now regarding transportation, and, and again, thank God for LETS. Without LETS, many of us would not be able to get around in this community and enjoy and have a good quality of life. One of the things they recommended here is expanded weekend service, and it says the first and the second year initial expansion, and then third and fifth year, uh, further expansion of weekend services. We have, we have weekend service that is modified to a degree, I guess, uh, that there are more people that need rides that they can get rides. My, my friend Eric Casey, that it's a nursing home in, in Regency in Whitmore Lake, he likes to come to church on Saturdays and Sundays, and there are many weekends that he cannot get a ride because they're all booked. And to make the, and, and just one more thing to add to that, sometimes you have to call two weeks ahead of time. And, and with the computers, you wait for that clock to tick and boom, you go on the computer and, and you call in, and already two weeks down the road, the rides are booked. There's no transportation. I know the budget has expired, the budget for this year has already been spent, but I hope you can find some money to maybe add another bus or two on Sundays, which would really help people that are of marginal means, people with disabilities, and, and people really that truly depend on that transportation. Thank you for your time, and again, thank you for all you do to, uh, to provide the best of quality of life in our community. Thank you.
We're going to-
I'm done.
You're done?
Yeah.
But I'm just getting started. I, I want to interrupt this for just a second to ask Teresa Cromanti. Are you, are you with us Teresa? Teresa?
Yes.
Teresa is our Director of Emergency Management, and we all realize the difficulties that we've been going through for the past few days. She has, she has been working 24 hours a day as, uh, one of our, one of our most talented people that, to deal with crises that we've ever had in this county. And I asked her to come online to Zoom and give us a brief, um, update on where we stand. And so then I told her I'd put her someplace in between somebody and somebody, so, uh, at least that she'll get a good night's sleep this evening. Teresa, would you please take the- Are you there?
Oh, I'm, I'm here sir. Yes, I am. On Zoom. So, um, just a quick overview, Thursday was overall a rough day because in the early AM hours right after Wednesday, uh, we got hit with quite a deluge and quite a storm. We had a little bit of a calm, and then, uh, next evening, we got hit with an even worse storm. Livingston County did get touched by the tornado, but luckily that touch was much smaller than our neighboring county of Ingham County. It did come into the, across the county border, but then dissipated, uh, right about the seed farm off of Van Buren Road, uh, which runs off of Fowlerville Road just south of the village. What we did experience, and this is all National Weather Service, uh, indicated, we experienced 90 mile per hour straight line winds that came from the northwest of the county and pushed through to the southeast. And in those straight line winds, there were also additional downbursts, and that just wreaked havoc across our county. The good news is, we did not have deaths or injuries. We have a lot of trees down, a lot of complex wire issues, uh, not just, a lot of roads were blocked. Our road commission ran non-stop all night long, as did our responders. It was my job to make sure everybody was communicating and things were, um, being met as far as resources and, you know, dealing with the electric companies and whatever the responders needed me to help them do. Continued into the next day, I can tell you, our responders did not sleep, nor did our Livingston County roads crews and, uh, the power companies were, they were already working from some of the things that had happened earlier that day, and they continued to work as well, and then, uh, call up additional help. So it has been a journey over the past several days. This has been rather long. Again, it's always difficult to deal with our own impacts. Those companies that are trying to get our power up and our cable reestablished are doing the same thing in neighboring counties that were hit harder, some of them, um, that did experience, um, far wider spread damage than what we did. We did go out and we were looking at damage, damage assessment, a lot of trees down, a lot of roadways blocked, a lot of, uh, power lines down. And we tried- And we tried to do our best to prioritize those and have those things moved. And of course, life safety comes first. So through the last several days, it was just a constant back and forth of just cut it. It's called a cut and run. Don't necessarily fix it, just cut it so it doesn't electrocute somebody and then we can cut these trees and open the roadway. So that was one of the number one priorities. On Thursday night, we started out with about 19,000 people without power. That's not good. By Thursday, we had 26,000 households through this county without power. And they have incrementally tried to improve that through the last few days. That was the peak at 26,000 plus without power. Right now, as of this speaking, we are at 6,000, just a little bit more than 6,000 people. And I can tell you, having in my travels today, the complex issues with the wires that are wrapped in really big trees, not little trees that came down, we're talking couple hundred year oaks and maples and a lot of just complex failures that they have to actually unwind the, unwind the wires from the trees. They have to replace many poles, many of the poles took such a hit that they broke. So they're not just restringing wires, they're repulling and then restringing wires. So we're almost there, almost. So everybody without power, please, again, be patient if you can. I know it's a tough ask. As far as generators, a lot of people have generators and that's great. We did initially on Saturday morning have some CO2 or CO issues where the monitors were going off because people's generators were not venting properly or they were being vented, but because the air was so heavy and so humid that the CO was actually accumulating. So all of our responders in this, fire responders within the county, we're checking on people for that as well. That becomes a secondary issue when we have these power outages. So with all of that, it was still pretty warm on Thursday. So we had opened two cooling shelters with wonderful partners that work with us in times of need. The Salvation Army, who's always been there for us, Lieutenant Rob Leach and Lieutenant Stephanie Leach, they're a married couple, run our Salvation Army here and have always been marvelous as far as stepping in to assist our, our community. And then 242 Church also opened their doors for people to cool down. Because of the storm on Thursday, they continued those services through Friday. And the Salvation Army, as like you say, they're very just, very dependable, they're going to continue to do that service, not only through the hot months of the summer, but then become a warming center every day on the weekdays for hours through the winter just in case. Majority of our townships were impacted in some way. As I said, the storm moved from the northwest and swept down to the southeast. So we saw a lot of damage in Handy, Conway, Iosco, Genoa, Green Oak, there's some, but there was no, there was absolutely no township that went untouched in this particular storm. So as we do damage assessment, we're just trying to find, you know, people who have the damages impacted them and their, their living structure. We have found some. We have asked that there is a, well, we put a reporting survey up on our Facebook and our Twitter page for emergency management. So people can go in and self-report their damage, tell us their location, who they are, send some pictures so we can take a look at it. We'll add it to our damage assessment tailing for the county. If they are not tech savvy or don't have the ability to do that, maybe they don't have a computer, they can contact their local fire department and the fire chiefs have all been asked to make sure that I know of any residents that are experiencing any kind of damage and get an idea of what it is. So there's that option or they can call my office direct. Been hopping around like a bunny rabbit, but if they leave me a message, I will certainly call them back. I have spoken with many, many citizens over the last few days. If they wish to call, we can have a discussion about whatever their needs or concerns are and I'm always happy to do that. So as we go forward here, on Sunday, yesterday, we put in a local declaration. And the local declaration is basically kind of that first little of a notice to the state to say, hey, our resources are taxed, we're really hustling, you know, at some point we may need something a little different. And they kind of say, okay, that's great. So then today, having spoken with the state and understanding that Ingham County, Eaton County, and the city of Lansing have gone up and asked for a governor's declaration, which is a state level, which opens up the ability, if the governor approves, opens up the ability to utilize state resources, things like the National Guard or other things for debris removal. And also if we can show an hard impact to budgets, we may be able to ask for some Section 19 funding, of which there are no strings. And I will make it very clear, because I'm sure there will be questions, that if there's something that the state says, well, but we would like you to jump through this, hope, we can look at them and say no. But that's not typically what they do in this case. I've never personally seen that in a weather related emergency. I should also mention that Fowlerville Fire Station Number 42 took a hard hit. They had some damages and their communication tower was completely destroyed. So we did have some critical infrastructure, but our overall critical infrastructure, roads and drains, bridges held up pretty well. The governor did approve the declaration for Livingston County, Eaton County, Ingham County, and the city of Lansing, I believe also County of Monroe. And that was made public this afternoon. I have not been directly notified of that, so I guess that's way super hot off the presses, but that apparently did come through Eaton County and they let us know. Other than that, if there's any questions that you would like me to answer, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you very much, Teresa. You very complete report and I know from personal experience being out in the field, as many of our other commissioners have as well, that everybody knows that you've been out there. So you've done a great job and we really appreciate all of your efforts.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go on with the next.
Eric Casey from Whitmore Lake, followed by Jessica Bearfield from Putnam.
I'm here to ask you guys, if you can do something about weekend abilities for guys like me and a bunch of people in my place, they need transportation. All that is done on Zoom. We need more people on the weekends to help these guys get through their workshop or whatever. It's hard to do. I've been very fortunate that I've had a lot of support, but a lot of guys, women in Regency don't got that. There's no way to get to shop or anything. And I don't know what you guys can do. I just throw it out there. I'll hold you guys up. I got a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Jessica Bearfield from Putnam.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am Jessica Bearfield. I am a resident of Putnam Township. In the last week, we have asked, we, when asked about the uptick in COVID cases and the new variant, President Biden responded by saying, I signed off on a proposal this morning we have to present to Congress requesting additional funding for a new vaccine that works. And we are tentatively recommending that everybody receive. There have been whistleblowers in the last month from TSA saying that the COVID restrictions and mask mandates will be back in full force for all individuals flying sometime this fall. Universities around the country are already reinstating mask mandates and limiting large gatherings on campuses. We have been down this road and we know what it looks like. And folks, it's on our doorstep again, but this time we have full vision and know what to expect and can take steps to thwart this attack to society before it happens again. While I am highly skeptical of approving any funds to the Health Department that could be used toward COVID initiatives, if the Board of Commissioners does choose to approve additional funds, there needs to be strong guidelines and stipulations in place for what that money can and cannot be spent on. I fully support Commissioner Fiani's additions to the resolution. The only addition I would personally make would be to include our senior citizens who we saw were also taken advantage of on an egregious level during our first round of COVID lockdowns and mandates. While I appreciate that Mr. Bowling feels none of the money would be used inappropriately, we have been told that before. Fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me. We will not be fooled again. We sadly have come to a time in society where somebody's word does not mean much and therefore clear cut guidelines in writing must be followed and are key. I would urge you all to vote yes to the amendment made by Commissioner Fiani for the resolution.
Thank you.
Tricia Fessler from Heartland Township, followed by Dawn Smith of Brighton Township.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tricia Fessler from Heartland Township. I would like to address the funding for emerging threats. I personally, like Jessica said, would personally rather see you not accept the funding. But if you should go ahead and agree that you want to accept the funding, I do strongly encourage you to vote yes on Commissioner Fiani's resolution, or amendment to the resolution. And I thank you, Commissioner. As someone who has had multiple family members be injured from vaccines, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. So it isn't just the mRNA bioweapon jabs that can be harmful and that should actually be illegal. I don't say that lightly as there are many references to back up the statement that I can send to you later. But regular vaccines can be harmful also, confirmed by many professionals as well as VAERS, Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System. It is why, over the years, I have volunteered my time and am so thankful for organizations like Michigan for Vaccine Choice, that has been around for many, many years and has tens of thousands of members and is comprised of healthcare professionals, attorneys, parents, and more. Finally, I want to mention that I also agree with Commissioner Akagiri, his comments from last meeting with regards to number five and number six of the amendment. The Health Department should not be encouraging schools to make decisions that actually discriminate against healthy students. And even though the Health Department may not be dealing with certain topics currently, it is important to be forward thinking. So please vote yes on the amendment if you should agree on approving this funding. Thank you so much. God bless you all.
Dawn Smith from Brighton Township, followed by Michelle Herbert of Genoa.
I'm here also to support the amendment, the amendment to the resolution. My name is Dawn Smith. I'm a RN, acute care nurse practitioner and clinical nurse specialist. Living through the past few years, I've learned that anything can happen and we need to be prepared and proactive. Officials and healthcare leaders in positions of power work with the information that they are given. Data can be misleading and infirmation can, is manipulated. I worked in the ICU in Detroit during COVID and we were overwhelmed until we weren't. Cases went down, our unit was almost empty and the ER was empty. Nurses were laid off and we were still instructed by the government of Michigan to not do any surgery unless it was emergent. Many of the patients that had to wait died or had serious complications related to delays in care. The public was given a skewed, skewed information on the numbers of cases I was there, I tracked it every week. Every patient was screened for COVID. Every positive case was counted as a COVID patient, no matter what they were in the hospital for. It could be anything. The numbers were lies. It could be a car accident. After I had COVID, I found out I was going to be fired for not getting an unnecessary vaccination. I spent months asking the experts and searching through the literature to find any real benefit to taking the vaccine after previous infection. There was no benefit to be found. I was told it was dogma and that everyone knows it is a benefit and that I was going to end up on a ventilator with the Delta variant. Clearly, they were wrong. The more and more information is coming out. I am one of the volunteers that is reading the Pfizer documents that were supposed to be kept secret for 75 years. They are lying. While I was trying to not be fired, I found a pre-print study that showed that COVID vaccine after, COVID vaccine, after a patient had already had COVID, decreased T and B cell immune function against the virus. I was very happy to found that, to find that and I was hoping that would help me keep my job. When that study was published, that section of the study was removed. Doctors and nurses that tried to speak out about what we were seeing were silenced and censored. I only know now that it was actually our government that was doing it. Science that cannot be questioned is propaganda. We must protect our community from attacks on our freedoms from the government and unelected bureaucrats. Data can be and is manipulated. Whatever the reason, the effect in our communities are profound. Children with speech and learning delays, businesses closed, citizens still in fear of walking outside without a covering on their face. We cannot let this happen again.
Michelle Herbert of Genoa, followed by Jane Locke, also of Genoa.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate it. My name is Michelle Herbert. I live in Genoa. I too am a former health professional here in town, actually for 30 years. And I'm here to support the amendment to the resolution. Again, my preference would be not take any money. Oh, I'm sorry. I would not take any money after the stuff we've been through in the last few years. But if you do decide to, again, it would be with really, really, really tight rules. And with this new COVID variant supposedly showing up, it's amazing how, to me, how it only shows up on election years, but I don't know, just seems to be odd. But if I would just have one thing to recommend to people is just boost your own immunity. Do it the natural way. Take your Ds, all your stuff, just do all that and you'll probably be just fine. Thank you. Michelle Herbert.
Yeah.
Jane Locke of Genoa Township, followed by Marcia Shemansky from Marion.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'll keep it brief. I'm not going to go off and reiterate the commentary prior to this about all the BS that went down over COVID. You're well aware of everything that happened. And oddly enough, this is going into an election year and this was predictable. Our leader, hate to call him President Biden, coming out looking for $40 million to develop a vax, a vaccine in months, really, seriously? And he wants everyone to take this. We've been down this road before. We've got tyrants now that have total control over Lansing, over the whole entire state. And we've lived through the tyranny of Gretchen Whitmer and Attorney General Nussel and the hardcore Michigan Department of Health and Human Services edicts in the past. And when Gretchen Whitmer couldn't get through the state Supreme Court, she called upon the Health Director to implement the very same unconstitutional things that she was trying to implement. I'm asking you not to take a penny from the state. There's nothing that comes from the state financially that does not have a string attached. There's always a string. You know what? You've been there before. We've all been there before. But if you insist upon taking any of this money, don't use a penny of it for COVID and especially for the elderly and the children. It's a travesty what they did to our children during this bogus plandemic that they pulled on us. And I don't want to see that happen again. This is, it's totally uncalled for and it's entirely avoidable, especially in our county. We have the best county in the whole state of Michigan. We have a constitutional county. And I think we should obey the constitution 100% of the time. Thank you very much.
Marcia Shemansky from Marion, followed by Tammy Higgins of Iosco.
Good evening, Commissioners. And I'm Marcia Shemansky, Marion Township. First of all, thank you so much. First of all, thank you so much for your service and what you're doing to protect us. It's greatly appreciated. And I'm also here to speak about the emergency funds and Commissioner Fiani's amendment. I would support not taking the money from the state, again, because of the totalitarian actions that they take violating our liberties, our constitutional rights, which were trampled and shredded during the last pandemic. Particularly want to protect the kids, so the amendment would take a step towards doing that. Children are at basically no risk from COVID, and they are at great risk from taking the gene therapy, which I'm just learning now, it's not messenger RNA, it's modified RNA, which is even more of a hazard to one's health. We don't know the long-term effects on children. There could be fertility issues, all kinds of things, but we are very much aware of a causal vaccine connection with myocarditis. So masking, again, the damage that did to the children's learning abilities, emotional development, et cetera, pretty horrific. And masks are totally ineffective against a virus. You're breathing more CO2, which is a health hazard also, so there's no gain whatsoever. And then, of course, the lockdowns that caused emotional and maybe permanent learning damage for so many children, destroyed businesses. I cried when I was reading of some of the businesses that were closed because of the second lockdown and everything that goes into that, plus the suicide rate for especially young children or young people that increased substantially because of all the emotional devastation. So we've learned so much in the last three years. And as Jessica said, fool me once, shame, I mean, fool me once, shame on you, but fool me twice, shame on me. So let's be wise and careful and pray and really go cautiously into what's coming. Thank you very much.
Tammy Higgins of Isasko Township, followed by Lisa R. from Hamburg Township.
Hello. You know, I'm here to talk about transportation, safe transportation. Seems like I hear a lot of people here saying they care about our children. I wasn't prepared to share the story, but my son was hit and left on the side of the road. We need bike paths. We need safe routes to school. He had a broken pelvis, a broken hip, a broken ankle, head trauma, scars. If we care about our children and you care about people such as Eric in our county, you will get our transportation plan implemented and our master plan that was approved in 2018. You'll have good transportation for those like Eric to take a bus to get where he needs to go. I spoke here before about core services, and you'll have safe routes for children to go to school and walk and be healthy, because it seems like that's what people want. They want healthy kids. They need to get out, they need to exercise, and not be in danger of their life and getting injured like my son was. And people use the roads as they are. They, if there's nothing there, people are going to walk on them. I don't like it when I hear people say, well, you shouldn't have been on that road. Well, there's no other choice, and you have the right to be on that road. So that's what I'm here to say, is just like, keep working on that transportation plan and put some money towards it, because that is something you can really improve the quality of life in this county for everyone, everyone. I don't care who you are or what your beliefs are. For every human being that comes here or lives here, they will be safer if we have bike paths, sidewalks that are complete, and transportation that can get people around to what they need to go and do to live and have liberty and life and not be in danger of death. Tammy Higgins, and I'll be back.
Lisa R. from Hamburg Township, followed by Terry Beebe of Brighton.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. I also wanted to talk about the emerging threat, who I think was just processed in Georgia, wasn't he? Anyways, I wanted to also support the resolution of Mr. Fiani, and I would personally like that you take no money at all. We have totally lost trust in our government agencies, and it's not without any reason. Somebody mentioned the Pfizer clinical trial documents that were supposed to be released 75 years from now, and thank God, there was a court order that made them start releasing it in batches. One of the things I wanted to talk about, I have a family member who is now expecting, and her OB-GYN in the office, everywhere she looks, it says the COVID vaccine is safe for pregnant women. I want to read just a few comments about a study that was done by Pfizer and what the findings were. It reveals that both Pfizer and FDA knew by early 2021 that the Pfizer mRNA COVID vaccine, BNT162BT, resulted in horrible damage to fetuses and babies. Adverse events in over 54% of the cases of maternal exposure to the vaccines were 248 out of 458. 53 reports are 21% of spontaneous abortions. And it's not just the fetuses and newborn babies that Pfizer calmly noted that were being damaged in the company's internal records. Pfizer also recorded multiple harms to babies through the milk of vaccinated mothers. According to Pfizer in the cumulative review, 19% of babies in Pfizer's records exposed to the company's COVID mRNA vaccine via their mother's breast milk were recorded as suffering from 48 different categories of adverse events. This is pathetic. I would love for you guys to outlaw this vaccine for pregnant women, and not only pregnant women, but I mean, this, this shows you that this is not safe nor effective. When Obama was president, he amended the Smith-Mund Act, which now allows the government to supply us with propaganda, and that's exactly what it had, just in time, just in time for, you know, what was coming. So I just urge you to, if you want more information, I'm happy to send these studies. Take a look at Naomi Wolf. She has a whole team of doctors and nurses, scientists, who are reviewing all of these Pfizer documents from the clinical trials. She's got a Substack account. She's also published a book on it. Thank you.
Terry Beebe of Brighton, followed by Julie Valdez of Howell.
Hello. I've never been in this setting before, but thank you very much for allowing me time to speak. I'm going to have a little bit of a different twist on this. I'm in agreement with everything everybody said, but I also want to talk about the emergency threat funding. I have been in the pharmaceutical industry for 26 years, and at this point in my career, I am not proud to say that. I entered very naively, and my eyes have been wide open the last few years. Everything our nurse said earlier is absolutely true. I'm in the hospitals every day, and I have nurses telling me about the misdiagnosis. It didn't matter if somebody came in for a car wreck or a broken leg. If they were positive for COVID, they coded them as COVID, the hospital got paid for COVID. Those numbers are totally skewed, and those are people who had no interest in revealing that information, right? So in early 2021, when most restrictions were taken off and we thought we were going to get back to life as normal, all of a sudden, my company decided to mandate the shot out of the blue. Prior to that, they'd have been some of us that had not had it, were mandated to take testing. But all of a sudden, this mandate came through. Ironically, it came right after our CEO signed a contract with the Department of Defense for $855 million. I'm ashamed to say that I'm part of that company. I was able to get a religious exemption, but it wasn't easy. They grilled you, and they were going to determine whether my faith of my God was real. They asked question after question. Only by the grace of God that I got the exemption, but many of my colleagues, who just are as strong as Christians I am, were fired mercilessly. No retirement, no unemployment, no severance pay, just we, you are no longer useful to us. Get out of here. Throughout the entire process, there were many lies, and employees were treated horribly. If I wasn't so close to retirement, I would be gone. My living is made examining clinical trials and discussing them with physicians. In every clinical trial, certain populations are excluded. When you exclude a population from a trial, when that drug is unapproved, it is not indicated for that population. These shots were not studied in a normal study, a randomized controlled trial, a robust study, for children or infants or pregnant women. Yet we are seeing billboards everywhere. Give your kids a shot. It's safe, it's effective. Give the pregnant woman a shot. It's safe, it's effective. Does anybody else but me think it's very strange and eerie that there are billboards on the expressway pushing this shot? I guess that's all I want to say, but I respectfully ask, I also agree that I would hope that you would not take the funding at all, because I've seen in my own company, there are always strings attached when you take money from the government. And I think with a clear conscience, you can say no, and you can protect this community. Leave the medical decisions up to the families, please.
Followed by Bill Reiver of Genoa.
Good evening. My name's Julie Valdez from Howell. I'm not that prepared, I apologize, but I did just want to say, like everyone here that's asking you not to take the funds, I would ask that you wouldn't as well. I appreciate your time on the amendment, but I still feel strings would be attached in what we've seen in our Michigan government and now Joey Biden and everything he wants to do with this new vaccine. I don't think we honestly could trust taking money. The effects of it on every age group, I look at the children, and I just think we have to protect them.
Followed by Colleen Quinn, also of Genoa.
Thank you, Commissioners. I don't know what is going to happen to us all collectively as a country. I feel something in the air, probably just like everybody else does. There's weird things afoot all over this country right now. But I'll tell you right now, whatever they hit us with, I'm addressing the Board of Commissioners that can be a line of defense for this county. Okay? I'm proud to be a resident of this county, a constitutional amendment county. I was here the day that you guys voted for that and supported Sheriff Murphy. That's one of the proudest days of my life. You know, I got to say, I'm sorry to say, I'm a little embarrassed to be a resident of Michigan, because we had some of the most draconian lockdowns in the country, right? And our state-level government let it happen. For the first time in my life, the last two years, I've been ashamed on a level to be an American, that we didn't get pitchforks and torches and put it where the sun don't shine with our elected officials. I don't know what they're going to do. They're going to do something. I feel it. I, and I'm going to make a statement, my shirt says it all, I will not comply with the will of tyrants. If I go down and I go down alone, I'm going to go down alone. But I know that there's people here that support us linking arms and just saying, thanks, but no thanks. Leave us alone. You fooled us once. How embarrassing that we're even to this point discussing the fact that we all know something's going to happen, they're not going to stop. Somebody here, tell me if I'm wrong. Does anybody agree that they're just going to leave us alone? They're not going to leave us alone. I'm asking you, Commissioners, please stand in the gate for us, okay? Money, health, if it's going to be smoke from Canada, if it's going to be wildfires from, I don't know what's going to happen, but as a community, we need you, Commissioners, to stand in our defense. We will support you. We will write letters. We will go to meetings. We will attend meetings. We'll do whatever it takes. Just stand in the gap for us, okay, guys? Please.
Colleen Quinn from Genoa, followed by Margaret Egan of Brighton.
Good evening, everybody. Colleen Quinn, precinct delegate for Genoa Township, Precinct 1, along with my husband, who got the opportunity to golf tonight, so that's why he's not here. Anyway, I'm changing what I'm going to say, because I just, I'm not changing my opinion, but a lot of this has been said, and the people have made such awesome comments, it's just very hard to top it. I think you all know where Livingston County residents stand in terms of medical freedom. We do not want to go down these paths again of lockdowns, tyranny, forced vaccination. And I'm going to throw another one out there, that when Bill says something's coming, the old climate lockdown. Get ready for that one. We want our constitutional liberties, God-given, protected in the Constitution. That's all I want. I don't need anything else. I just need government to protect my rights. I don't need anything from them. I'll take care of my health. I'm happy about the amendment and the time, but I would say, do not accept this money. We all say government is getting too big. Let's turn, let's quit feeding the beast. Don't take the money. Let's do our own thing. And I am so proud of you guys as a Commissioner, so fortunate to live here, and we can be an example for the state and the country. So just stand firm. We support you. Thank you.
Margaret Egan of Brighton, followed by Charlotte Hammack of Howell.
Hi. My name is Margaret Egan, and I've been a resident of Livingston County for more than 40 years, mostly in Whitmore Lake, and more recently, I still am in Green Oak Township, but it's a Brighton address. I'm here to ask you to support and promote the improvement of non-motorized transportation and public transportation options in our county. I believe these investments would greatly benefit our community. Non-motorized transportation, including walking, cycling, and skating, and scootering, I see a lot of scooters out there, offer numerous advantages for both individuals and the environment. Having alternatives to motorized transportation improves public health by increasing exercise. It decreases traffic congestion and improves air quality. Increased safe cycling opportunities are also an economic investment as they draw tourism dollars to our area. I'll testify to that. My husband and I go on vacations where he can golf and I cycle. Moreover, public transportation improves, provides equitable access to transportation choices for community members, the gentleman that left, who may not own cars or prefer alternative modes of travel. When the opportunity arises, please consider collaborating with local stakeholders. Engage with community organizations and advocacy groups that are focused on non-motorized transportation and public transportation. Ensure that infrastructure improvements and policy decisions align with the needs and aspirations of the maximum number of residents. Your leadership in this area will undoubtedly have a lasting impact on the well-being and livability of our community. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing our county embrace non-motorized transportation and public transportation as an essential component of our transportation infrastructure. Thank you for your time.
Charlotte Hammack of Howell, followed by Craig Dreller of Tyrone Township.
Good evening. Charlotte Hammack from Howell. I'm asking you to refuse the mask mandate. I'm asking you to refuse the COVID vaccines. I don't know, have any of you ever read this book? They have been banded. These are top scientist doctors. Banded off of media. Wonder why? Also wanted to bring into something that we all should be looking at, all of us. Everybody, everybody that's listening to this, I want you to punch up the Supreme Court law. It's called Norton versus Shelby. I want everybody to know that inside and out. Also would appreciate if you look up the Neumanberg Code. All right. I also want you to look up at the end of the school year of last year, how many children were admitted into Beaumont Hospital for lungs, bronchitis, from wearing these nasty rags on their face. Also want you to look up the directions on that box of masks. And then I want you to ask yourselves before you agree with this non-GMO. Isn't it what it is? Yeah. Non-government organization demanding to take rights from us Americans, which will not happen. And with me. You can find me like you did the barber guy. You could shut down the pet shops. I got friends out of business. I had pet shops. Groomers, hairdressers, had to pay Governor Whitmer $10,000. Well, what I would like for you to do with this money, if you do accept it, I want you to do a home, nursing home death count. All right? And then I want you to go back onto the ballot issue, which has now come out. What happened to the mail-in ballots of the 2020 election and of the 2022? That's what we can do with the COVID money. You could protect the citizens of Michigan. The tyrannical government is over. And if you do not have a copy of this book, I would leave it with you all for y'all to read. It is everything in here from top scientists and doctors. And I do not want to see the youth. I wouldn't even want to be a child going into these public schools right now. Okay? I mean, we got CTR and you got this COVID thing and masking them up again. We are not sheep. We are humans. I am in a republic, constitution of America. This is a Republican government, and I want it respected as one and not tyrannical. I thank you for your time.
Craig Dreller, Tyrone Township.
Good evening. Craig Dreller, Tyrone Township. Based on the testimony that I've heard tonight, I'm in full agreement for not accepting that money for it's, for what's, the strings that will be attached, that we all feel confident that there are strings attached or some kind of mischievous behavior that's, would be accompanying that money. And if it is accepted, I'd also like to support Commissioner Fiani's resolution or amendment to the resolution to that, um, to that end. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I have no more cards.
We do, but Commissioner, I need you to turn your mic on because I can't hear you. Um, I have Alyssa.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. Hi, um, this is Alyssa Davis. I am in the city of Brighton, precinct delegate, um, precinct two. Um, I, I just, you know, I'm in agreement with what everyone says. And um, I'm gonna ask you, please don't take this money. Here's my thing. Everybody is mentioning to you and um, you know, how proud we are to be residents of Livingston County because of all of you and because of all of us, but because of all of you too and declaring us a constitutional county and to a sanctuary. I mean, those are beautiful things. And what really gets me, and although Commissioner Fiani, his amendment is lovely. But with these funds, um, all of these obligations. So here you are. On one hand, screaming from the rooftops, we're a constitutional county. Look at us. And with this funding, the first time I talked to you guys, I said, dirty money makes dirty people. So all that money from before has proven to be true. So when you scream, we're a constitutional county from the rooftop, and then you take monies that give you parameters that are unconstitutional. I see a bit of hypocrisy here. So I will ask you, please stay in line with where we were when we declared ourselves a constitutional county. Please stay with that mindset and please do not take these monies. Um, and that's all I've got outside of, thank you very much. Um, I'm very grateful for all of you. So thank you.
Next I have Janine.
Yes, uh, good evening. Uh, and thank you commissioners for your service to our community and representation um, of, of all of us. And I also want to thank all who have attended tonight, either in person or Zoom, to come in or otherwise to just be in attendance and be part of the process. Um, my comments are also about the emerging threats resolution. As Jessica had stated, um, COVID 2.0 is upon us. Uh, and apparently variant VS 24/7 has reared its ugly head. And um, so this, this, this amendment is very timely. Unfortunately, it only applies to these funds. So um, so I, I um, support the amendment. I have similar sentiments about uh, accepting the funds uh, to begin with. But um, what I, I want to emphasize tonight is that um, provision five, um, as far as excluding students from extracurricular activities. Because, oh, well, extracurricular activities of a student who has gotten a shot, um, I feel is um, a discrimination and we shouldn't be doing that to children. If a vaccine, whether it be um, mumps, rubella, measles, COVID, any vaccine, if it's uh, effective, then um, it's, it should protect the person who has gotten the shot. So the unvaccinated student uh, shouldn't be a threat at all to the vaccinated. So um, I think our kids have gone through enough. You know, it's, it, it's really been to the detriment of their mental health to exclude them from school. I don't care if it's vaccinated and vaccinated. The masking, you know, all that has really taken a toll on our kids. And we just shouldn't, um, we really shouldn't allow that to happen. So I'm in full support of the amendment. And that's it. Thank you all um, for hearing me out. Have a good evening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next we have Lori Cowan.
Yes, thank you. I'm Lori Cowan from Unitella Township. And I just wanted to say that the comments made tonight do not represent my views as well as a large percentage of the residents of Livingston County. And I ask you to accept the funding for the Health Department without Fiani's amendment. There are no strings attached. There never have been strings attached, and there won't be in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next I have Jennifer Smith.
Hello, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Good morning. Good evening, Jenny.
Hi, commissioners. Um, I just had a couple of words to say about Commissioner Fiani's resolution amendments. Uh, many of you on the board did not get the wonderful privilege of experiencing meetings during the 2020 into 2022 commissioners and all across the county, whereby hours of call to public testimonies waned into the wee hours of the night, multiple days of the week. Endless hours of angry parents and constituents fueled the elections that brought many of you to these commissioner seats that you are sitting in today. Today, we are a constitutional county because of all of you sitting here. And we all know and respect every one of you, which is why we supported you. The only reason that we are a constitutional county is due to the efforts of the same people that stayed in these meetings, hours on end, to push for our privileges and our liberties. I'm asking you, in light of the constitution, and as Alyssa has previously said, to please keep in mind our constitutional county and how many across the state look to us as being leaders, and I would just like to remind you of that. Um, please be the gatekeepers we elected you to be, and please support Commissioner Fiani's resolution as representatives of we, the people of Livingston County. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
I do not have any more, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak before the board? Yes, ma'am. What's your name, please?
Cynthia Maher.
Cynthia Maher. You want to sit up here?
Hi, I've never been here before. It seems pretty.
Are you nervous?
Pardon?
Are you nervous?
Yes.
How do you think we feel?
All right. Okay.
You're fine. You're doing just fine.
I, I have four questions. Okay. Um, I want to know some examples of emerging threats. Second question, I want to know some examples of actions outside the ones in the amendment that might threaten our constitutional rights. I want to know who is in charge of deciding how to spend the money to battle the emerging threats? Is it somebody we can trust? And the second is, the fourth is, how can we stop any spending that might screw us over?
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Point of, point of order, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
We, we have a process for call to public that, you know, requires people to fill out a card if they want to speak, and we go through the process. I'm not opposing one more person, but I would hate to get into a practice that we're going to violate our own rules and procedures. And um, anyway, that's a concern of mine. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
This, this person has already spoken.
Oh, you've already spoken?
She can speak at the end.
Yeah, we have another call of the public at the end of the meeting. And thank you very much, Commissioner Nakiri. Anything else?
Zoom people, we lost IT feed. I'm getting it back on as soon as possible.
Uh, August 14th. We've done that. Support. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, item 10 is tabled items from previous meetings, and we do not have any. Oh, we do. I heard that whisper. Oh, we do. What are those, by the way?
So we, we would need a motion to um, motion to take from the table, resolution 202308142. And that's the resolution pertaining to emergent threats.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion to remove it from the, from the minutes. Anybody support?
Support.
Moved and supported. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
This requires a roll call vote.
Okay.
Now, now we're moving it from the table.
Thank you. Now, where are we? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Move on.
Mr. Chair, uh, now that we're in the discussion of a resolution.
Yes.
May I uh, discuss?
Yes, please.
At this time, I move to amend the resolution uh, to add at the very end, be it further resolved that none of these funds may be used to, one, vaccinate a person zero to eighteen years of age without the express written consent of his or her parent or guardian in the presence of his or her parent. Two, institute, assist, advocate or enable countywide vaccine mandates. Three, institute, assist, advocate or enable countywide mask mandates. Four, implement or enable policies with respect to discriminating between vaccinated and unvaccinated persons or a vaccine passport type system. Five, implement or enable policies which cause a healthy student to be excluded from school and extracurricular activities without the express informed written consent of his or her parent or guardian or without a court order. Six, provide persons zero to eighteen years of age with gender altering or elective abortion services. Seven, inhibit an individual's ability to appeal mandates or policies at the county or state level in which county activities are challenged as a violation of constitutional rights.
Are there any comments or questions? Any additions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I, I think we should, you know, I would like to hear from Matt too.
Matt, you want to come in?
When or he's gonna, are you gonna bring him into the discussion at any time?
That's what I'm asking. Because this is uh, usually when uh, resolution deals with the department, the department head is asked to give their input. All right. So I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering when in the process uh, will that happen? Because we, we had quite a bit of discussion at the last time and Matt was part of it. We are continuing the discussion, from what I understand. So I assume that we're in the same mode that Matt is. Matt, do you want to comment? As part of the discussion as he was before, that's all. Matt, do you want to comment on this, please?
Um, you know, I appreciate the commissioner's discretion on, you know, the use of this funding. You know, there's um, as I stated in, in meeting a couple of weeks ago, you know, we're not in COVID pandemic response mode. in COVID pandemic response mode. This money helps support mandated operations within the department. There's flexibility with this funding to do that. You know, as was mentioned, you know, I understand our community, I understand what is tolerable and what's not. So this isn't funding that I would use for what's been restricted in the resolution. However, there are some items in the resolution that are in conflict with the public health code, so puts me at conflict with my position should, should something happen in the future. So that's my only concern, is there is some conflict between state law and this resolution. Other than that, it's, you know, the prerogative of the board to do what the board is, so.
Then my question is, I assume that this has gone, that Matt Norford in council has seen this, because before, before, it's just normal for our resolutions to go before council, before, before final approval, so I don't know whether. Can I ask our administrator if he knows?
If council is available.
All right, there he is. Matt, have you had an opportunity to review this?
I've reviewed a form of this. I have not reviewed the actual amendment that is before you this evening. So the answer is yes, in part.
I'll briefly speak to that. I did initially reach out to Attorney Norford on a draft of this, initial draft, that, actually the one I proposed two weeks ago, or so, and is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Norford, but his comment was, it was, it was permissible, except if it conflicts with the actual contractual agreement with the state. My, would you like to, I do have more to say, do you want to?
No. Okay. That's accurate. So my, my response was that unless such expenditure is expressly required by the terms of the grant or by law, the rest of the items that were identified in the draft, I had no legal concern with.
So my, my position is, and I maintain this position, is I'd like to see it passed, and if the state does have an issue with it, they know where to find us.
Anybody have any further comments, Commissioner?
I just, as far as the Constitution, the Constitution is very clear that there's certain.
Mr. Helsner, can you please speak into your mic?
There are only certain things that are allowable expenses by the federal government, and in the 1930s, we, we completely ignored that, and we've ignored that ever since. And so there may be a time in our future, and I don't know how quick it is, that someday we will have to reject all outside funding that has strings attached to it. I don't know, that's not particularly my place at this particular point. I can see that at some point, if you want to be free, you don't take money that has strings attached to it. However, there's, there's the other side to that, and I don't know, you know, our country has gotten so used to federal funding that I don't know if that would ever fly, but I wish that bird would get wings and learn to fly.
Commissioner Nakigiri? Yeah, I have a 30-second video clip that I had given to Dustin to play during the debate and discussion on the, on this Health Department grant, so if you could cue that
Thank you. That, that I'm pretty sure is what Jessica Bearfield had referred to. So I, I wanted to, even though it was a little repetitive, I wanted to show the clip because it's a picture is worth a thousand words. You know, I, I'm concerned, you know, when they say, when the president says it's going to be recommended, we, we've seen that picture before, the recommendations turn into, oh, it's a mandate now. So in my view, we should all be concerned about what's brewing in the future. With respect to Commissioner Fiani's amendment, I fully support the amendment, and I'm in agreement that, you know, the state of Michigan knows where to find us. So, thank you.
Anyone else have any comments? Yes, Commissioner, Jason?
I'm generally in support of Commissioner Fiani's proposed amendment. However, I'd like to point out that I believe items one through five were contained in a resolution that was passed by the board in 2021, and so it's somewhat repetitive. But if it's the wisdom of this board to approve this on top of what was previously approved, I guess that's what we will do.
Yes, sir. We're discussing the amendment currently, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner.
It is my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but the language in the previous resolution that was referenced only pertained to that resolution because of how it was, how it was written. My, and.
I guess we might want a legal opinion as to the efficacy of a previous resolution that was passed. Commissioner Nakigiri?
Yeah, I would concur with Commissioner Fiani. That the, the language referred to those five points were specifically for the resolution to accept grant funding last year. So, you know, if we, we need to repeat the, the language, and if we were to do it again next year, we'd have to repeat it. The, the, and the only way to get around that is if we were to pass a overarching policy that says, you know, in this or future budgets that we're not gonna, that we're gonna have these strings on there. But, you know, what was passed a year ago was specific to the, the budget, the, the grant funding for last year.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, I saw you nodding there. Did you have a comment you wanted to make?
No, sir.
Anybody else? Are we ready for a vote? This is on the amendment, correct? All those, you, you just coughed.
Just clearing my throat.
Okay.
Get a rate of vote.
All right. So we're, we're going to vote on the amendment. All those in favor, there's, this is not a roll call vote at all, it's going to be a simple up and down. All those in favor of accepting the amendment as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, we have accepted this amendment? Yes, sir. I, there were some points that were brought up in, in the call to the public, and one is trust, okay? And this board chose Matt to be the health director because this board had trust in Matt, in Matt's wisdom. Now, it wasn't a, it wasn't a unanimous vote, but Matt has shown us in his tenure at the county to be reasonable and, and that sort of thing, and so that, and I think that the things that may be objectionable or possible objections from Matt's point of view, I think might not ever come up. That's kind of, and so that's why I feel, you know, I feel confident that Matt understands the spirit of this and will work within that spirit. So I favor the full resolution. Thank you, Commissioner. Matt, you want to make any comments, please?
I would encourage the board to support the funding at this point with the, you know, the restrictive language that's been added, and I mean, I can't answer any further questions. This has been, I think I've spoken about this ad nauseam in earlier meetings and last year as well, so.
I think we're all on board together. We're either going to sail together or sink together, I think. So we'll, we'll take a vote, unless anyone else got any other comments? All those in favor? I think this is roll call. It is roll call. Yes. All right.
Commissioner Helsner? Chairman Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample? Commissioner Nakigiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Drick?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Eight to one, the motion carries as amended.
Where are we on the agenda, please?
Number eleven.
Number eleven? Okay. I got it. I got it. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Commissioner?
Thank you. Under reports this evening, we, we are welcoming Mark Robinson to us. For those of you who don't recall, Mark retired from Livingston County Catholic Services back in April, and we were honored to present him with recognition for his outstanding service to the community for over 25 years. And lo and behold, the call to duty siren has sounded, and Mark has responded, and he is now the interim director, executive director of Livingston County United Way until they find a new fearless leader. So Mark asked that he be given the opportunity to reintroduce himself to us, and so with that, we'll give him five minutes to do so.
Have a seat, Mark.
Thank you. I probably only need two minutes. It was a really short-lived retirement, seven weeks, but thank you. I am now temporarily serving at the Livingston County United Way. They went through some, and still are going through some staffing changes, and they asked if I would fill in, and I'm only doing that on a part-time basis, two or three days a week. And she had to leave, but some of you may know Jean Clum, who previously worked at the Livingston County United Way and retired five years ago. She also has returned on an interim basis to run this year's United Way campaign. I wanted to let everyone know that even through this transition period, things are alive and well with Livingston County United Way. Had a very successful day of caring, 750 volunteers, 48 projects, most of them working with homebound and low-income senior citizens in the county, though several of the projects were at some of our local schools, sprucing up the outdoors. The campaign has kicked off for county employees. Jennifer Nash is running that campaign. There's a full board. The board has really rolled up their sleeves during this interim period, and I just want the community to feel comfortable that trust has been mentioned a couple times, that they can trust the Livingston County United Way as we move forward.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
You and I go back a long way.
We do.
We were both rookies, or at least I was when I first met you, and you've just done great things for the county, and I, I think the only thing it's missing here is a statue out front here with your name on it.
I'm not that old. I, I was at a Chamber of Commerce function two weeks ago, and there was a guest speaker, and after a couple people made comments, he pointed at me and said, but that's not true for your generation. And I looked around the room, and I, Nick Proctor and I were probably the only two people over the age of 65 in the room, so it's like, oh, boy.
Well, you've done a great job, and the county is indebted to you for all of your years of service.
No. Well, thank you. And if anyone has any questions, concerns, needs information from the Livingston County United Way, please let me know. Thank you.
You bet.
Thanks a lot, Mark.
Commissioner Gross, thank you for that. Appreciate it. That is the last report. We're going to move on now to item 12, which is resolutions for consideration. I'll turn the meeting over to Commissioner Drick, please, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item number 12A is numbered 2023-08-147. It's a resolution to change the 2023 Veterans' Milage. Director Baca?
Good morning, gentlemen.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Helsner, and support by Commissioner Deaton. We are on FAM. Are there any further questions or analysis or comment? Want to just take a bow and go home, or what? You guys are doing a great job over there. Really are, so.
We're dedicated to the county's veterans, absolutely. We're working hard every day to impose that and ensure our veterans are connected to their VA federal benefits, or those are county benefits, and just trying to go above and beyond in every moment that we can.
When I first got here, the Veterans Department was downstairs in this building in an office about the size of two closets. And they had, I think, two people, maybe one and a half. But it's grown a lot from then, and it does great things for the veterans in this county. So really, we really appreciate you being here, and don't take any other offers. Anybody else have a comment to make? Yes, sir.
I, I just would like to say that it was appreciated, the back and forth between some of the commissioners and yourself on explaining the milage and how that came about for some of us that didn't sit on the board previously, to understand how it was established beforehand and why it was going to the number it is. Thank you. Anybody else?
All right.
In that case, we need a roll call vote. The clerk will lead that.
Commissioner Helsner?
Yes.
Chairman Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakigiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Drick?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Nine to zero, motion carries.
Thank you kindly. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We're at 12B on the agenda. It's number 2023-08-148. It's a resolution authorizing the sheriff's office and the Livingston, and the county of Livingston to apply for and enter into a contract with the state of Michigan Office of Highway Safety Planning for fiscal year 2024, the Secondary Road Patrol and Traffic Accident Prevention Program Grant. May I get a motion?
So move, Gross.
Support, Smith.
Thank you. Been moved by Commissioner Gross and supported by Commissioner Smith. Again, this was well questioned and analyzed at FAM. Any further questions, comments, or observations? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Helsner?
Yes.
Chairman Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakigiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Drick?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Nine to zero, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yeah, and before you leave, I, I want to thank you for the, the department going to bat for everybody in this county during this recent crisis. I know you guys were everywhere.
Well, we appreciate that, and obviously, we're all, we all love this community, and that's what we're out there to do.
That's right. You got it. All right. Thanks again. I'm sorry.
We're at, it's okay. We're okay. We're on twelve C on your agenda. It is number two oh two-three dash oh eight dash one four nine. It's a resolution authorizing to accept the state of Michigan Bureau of Emergency Preparedness EMS. And the Systems of Care Grant RFP EMSWD dash two oh two-four. From Emergency Medical Services, can I get a motion? Move it. Support Gross. Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Domus, supported by Commissioner Gross. Director Felpoche is probably on Zoom or someone in his stead. Yes. Any further, since we discussed it and hashed it through at fam, any further questions, analysis, comment, or objection? Hearing none, we'll close that and go to a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Helsner.
Yes.
Chairman Domus.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Nine to zero, motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to twelve sub D on your agenda. It's number two oh two-three dash oh eight dash one five zero. It's a resolution authorizing a contract award to La Casa for court-appointed special advocate services. For the Circuit Court and the Juvenile Court. Can I get a motion? So move Gross.
Second sample.
Moved by Commissioner Gross, seconded by Commissioner Sample. Miss Shaw is here. Any further questions or analysis, complaints, objections, or otherwise for the nice lady? Seeing none, I'll close the discussion portion and go to a voice vote. All those in favor of this resolution kindly say aye.
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 Any opposed? It's nine to zero unanimous passage. Thank you kindly. It would be good. We're on to number twelve E. It's number two oh two-three dash oh eight dash one five one. It's a resolution authorizing the fiscal year twenty twenty-four memorandum. Of understanding and cash matching. Funding for behavioral health managed care services, also known as wraparound. May I get a motion?
Motion Smith. Support Deaton.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith moved, support by Commissioner Deaton. Again, this was thoroughly questioned and answered at the fam meeting that we all attended. But this is your chance to further question, further analyze, further object, or otherwise comment.
Why do they call it wraparound?
It's literally wrapping services around kids.
But exactly now, what does that mean? You and I both know that, but probably a lot of people on this board don't.
It means um making sure that all of the partners that are working with the family are working together with that family. So we're not going in different directions, but working to elevate what the family needs and wants. And making sure that we're getting our services to them, stepping outside of our normal boxes. To make sure that that kid and family have exactly what they need to be successful.
The uh the the best example that I recall is one that happened in my district where. The real problem was the 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 parent, the father, had a problem with alcohol. And and everybody tried to fix this family. Nothing cha-changed until they worked on him. So the the wraparound concept is, you know, take every element of the family. Whether it's a child with autism or uh an illness of some kind and a job. Sometimes the problem is that there's no income and the breadwinner is not able to provide it. And uh so I I think it was a great concept then and I'm sure it still works that way today. Very good. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for saying so.
You bet.
Thank you. We'll close discussion and move into voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero unanimous. You're welcome. We're on to twelve F. It is. Number two oh two-three dash oh eight dash one five two. It's a resolution authorizing felony public defender contracts. For public defenders. This was thoroughly uh questioned and answered at fam. We're all there. And that would be a good thing, too.
Second sample.
Is there? Thank you. Motion by Nakagiri, second by Sample. Does anyone need further analysis, comment, insightful cross-examination of any sort? Crickets? We'll move into a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Helsner.
Yes.
Chairman Domus.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Nine to zero, motion carries.
Thank you. We're at twelve G of the agenda. It is number two oh two-three dash oh eight dash one five three. It's a resolution authorizing the creation of a full-time administrative aide position at the public defender. Can I get a? Motion, please. Move it. Support Gross. Moved by Commissioner Domus, support by Commissioner Gross. Any further analysis, questions, or grilling? Seeing none, we will proceed with a roll call vote kindly.
Commissioner Helsner.
Yes.
Chairman Domus.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Nine to zero, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gouna.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We're on to Resolution twelve H. It's number two oh two-three dash oh eight dash one five four. It's a resolution authorizing granting authorization to exceed the ten thousand dollar annual maintenance limit. For repair of the portage and baseline lake dam. Can I get a motion? So move Helsner.
Second sample.
Is moved by Commissioner Helsner, supported by Commissioner Sample. Any further questions or uh comment beyond what we'd had at fam?
Commissioner.
Yes.
I I admire you for sticking in here as long as you did. We're all gonna accept this because we know that ultimately it's gotta be done. And uh so I appreciate all your work and I'm glad to vote for it.
Yeah, it it does um have to be done. And I understand why there's some of the questions behind it. It's a very unusual. Um statute. And so we're coming asking for. Um authorization to exceed a limit. Typically, that's not what happens. Typically, you funded the research. And the design and you have it, you know, usually bid before we come here and say, are we good to go? In this case, we can't even design it um because the cost is over ten thousand dollars. So. Uh really backwards um in in my opinion, and Commissioner Nakagiri brought this up. And asked why there isn't some ability to um to create a fund to help mitigate some of these. These uh large expenses that often occur with dams. And I can't tell you that uh it is a. It's a horrible statute. I'll just say that much. And my understanding is that the new changes to the statute. Do not currently anticipate the ability to build such a fund. So maybe more of the same. Unfortunately, but it is um it is very different from, say, some of the other things that other infrastructure that we deal with. Like sewers and and drains and that kind of thing, so.
Thank you.
Any further other comment, Commissioner Sample?
Uh in your opinion, when would you see this work take place?
Um probably in the spring. It's probably gonna take the winter for um. Part of the winter for design. Actually, then maybe they would authorize it late winter potentially.
You see it being an impact to the the use of the lakes?
No, I don't think so. My understanding is they can do it incrementally. You know, there's not a, there's not um much of the way of concrete work. Where they might have to take some of the um some of the spillways offline or something like that. It's essentially replacement of those gates.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um. Could you elaborate on uh once the? The funding or the, once it's determined what the expenditures need to be to fix the problem. Uh how does the property owner get a a voice in this? I'm I'm assuming there's a vote for for of those in the special assessment district. Is that correct?
No, there isn't. The way this and um the way this particular statute works is there is a petition. Uh by the the people typically, although local governments can also um execute those petitions. But it's actually two-thirds of the um the property owners of records surrounding the lake. Uh so it's a pretty high standard. And what the, once that's in place, essentially you are managing. A structure that is within the waters of the US or in the case of Michigan, your waters of the state, since we have our own regulatory agency. And because of that, we're bound by um the requirements uh under dam safety. So there is no vote for that assessment um other than. Effectively, there was when it was originally petitioned. So very unusual statute in the way this works.
So once the original property owners uh approved long ago, years ago, I I think my understanding was a two. And they needed two-thirds vote to to set up the special assessment. From that point on, it's, you know, there it's, if if you need. More money, I mean, they've already approved it, correct?
Correct. Uh other than, you know, we're still uh kept at the ten thousand dollar per year. That hasn't changed. Um to my knowledge in many, many years. So it it creates the situation where a lot of large dams. Um have to do it every year. Um and it hasn't been adjusted. But the alternative is. The alternative is that you uh it becomes so unsafe that uh the state basically steps in and says. You're gonna remove that dam and this is the way you're gonna do it. Um in which case, you know, in in this particular case. Thousands of property owners would lose a large um a large part of their property value. And so if you know uh people that live on lakes, there's a couple of them at least here. Um they're very sensitive about their lake not being there uh when they come out in the morning. And so. Um so once you're doing that, because you have a structure uh in a regulated water body. Um I'm guessing that's the reason why uh these things are almost mandatory. So it it is an odd one. It's the only one to my knowledge that exists the way this one does. I do know that the next one will be uh significantly more stringent. Um the reason being is, and and this was something used by the owner of the dams, the Edenville and Sanford dams. Is that it's too expensive. I don't have the money um, you know, to to repair it. And we saw what happened there. Uh and uh so, you know, if you've been up there, it's a it's a forest where the lake. Used to be. And um so anyway, that's why there's gonna be some major uh changes to that statute. I just wish they'd do something more in terms of planning um in in more risk assessment for what could go wrong. And planning for those events.
Any further comment or question?
Thank you, Monsieur. Commissioner asked this question uh to Mr. Riker in the fam meeting and I think when, as our dams are getting older. Um and then technology has gotten better, is there any way um in the design of them to add any hydroelectricity? You know, type of um capabilities?
You know, from what we've seen, that with the current technology, we've been approached on a number of occasions and. The problem with our dams um is that we don't have enough fall to really generate the electricity that would produce a. You know, reasonable payback period. So the Highland Dam down in in Hell, that would, or possibly the Nishua Dam in in. You know, township. Um those are our largest dams that that our office maintains. And um again, from the work that we've done and and vendors approaching us, it just wasn't feasible. You get in a fifteen, twenty-foot drop, um you have that potential. The other thing is you you need a a very large watershed. Um where you have that continuous flow. And um and so. Probably limited a little bit there, especially with uh Nishua Lake. You gotta have that extra water flowing. And many of our dams are very small, so we see once it gets dry, they'll stop flowing or flow very little.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, Commissioner?
I'd like to thank you for the extra email that you sent. That was enlightening about the three occasions of. The prior inspections and attempts at repair that helped. See that the the original paperwork somewhere says. The annual maintenance limit of ten thousand dollars will not be exceeded. So there's an amount. And a time factor currently written that you're asking us to tinker with. I'm not in favor of writing a blank check tonight for whatever comes back. And having the eight hundred and eighteen taxpayers or forty-six percent of the lot owners get. A blank check that they have to deal with. Could we say that since six fifty-two is the number in paper now? Could we say, let's pretend it's eight hundred thousand, and we say Livingston County is okay with. A one-time annual limit of four hundred thousand. Not, not saying that they can't come back, but for right now, we're we're not gonna write a blank check for whatever. We're good for four hundred thousand from Livingston County uh lot owners. So the annual limit would be four hundred thousand.
Um I think.
Just because.
Yeah.
We don't know and we don't want somebody to go berserk and say, gee, they've got a blank check out there.
Yeah, and I think that's fine. You you know, from the the point, we can make that known. From the point that we would take. If that we took bids, the time that we would authorize a contractor to go forward, we would likely have time to come back here and say. Hey, this is what it was. I think Ken's um, Ken recommend like an overall project value of uh of one million. Because I think the 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 cost was uh uh the estimated uh construction cost was.
Six fifty-two.
Six fifty. That didn't include engineering. That doesn't include any of the the legal or court costs that uh they might incur.
Well, that's why I went up to eight hundred and then slashed in half for our portion.
For our portion, yeah. And I think you could probably do that. I don't think that would be a problem. We could certainly, if we had to come back to this body. So we did.
Now, what and what year should we peg it for? Twenty twenty-three or peg it for twenty twenty-four? The four hundred, because we're running out of twenty twenty-three. Or do you want to be able to assess in twenty twenty-three?
Oh, no, there there, we won't make it by the end of twenty twenty-three. Assessments have to be in here in the next. Couple months anyways.
So we should say that for the year twenty twenty-four, you no longer have this ten thousand limit. If if my amendment's gonna pass, that but we're going with the four hundred thousand.
Yeah. Um so here's where um I'm thinking maybe a rub might come in because we'd be designing. And there's a lot of maintenance on that dam. They really have a guy down there full-time is we may uh uh surpass that ten thousand. This year with the design. And then you would be uh uh in uh in excess of that next year, certainly when you constructed it. So I think I think if you authorized it um uh the eight hundred thousand that uh or four hundred thousand. Uh that you were thinking of.
For the year twenty twenty-four, but knowing.
Well.
We could be flexible. Or say.
On a project and and uh and make it applicable for for twenty twenty-three and twenty-four. Um I think that would probably, that would probably work fine. Just uh as a point of.
Combination of two years, four hundred.
Right, for the project, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And we did run, uh Ken ran the numbers today and we assumed. Um on a million-dollar uh project, what that would mean for residents in Livingston County to be of around eight hundred. Residents on that roll that are in Livingston County. Um and we figured, you know, just uh uh with a. With that one million number, um you know, the average property owner, uh lakefront owner would probably receive a fifteen hundred dollar. Assessment. Um that that's the base assessment. You're probably have at least five hundred dollars in in interest. at least $500 in, in interest because we would have to float a bond in order to fund it. And so you're probably talking about, you know, $2,000 over the course of how many years we float that bond, five or 10 years, something like that. So you're, you're maybe looking at 400 or 500 or less. Yeah. So that's kind of what we're looking at. There's so many people in the district that it makes it, it makes it palatable for these large projects or certainly palatable as opposed to losing the lake. So.
Thank you. That's all I have. If there are any other questions or comments that I stirred up, now's the time to talk. In that case, I'd make an amendment to the be of resolve that I think is on agenda page 193. That the authorization is exceed the annual maintenance limit of 10,000. And then the words after that would be for a total of 400,000 covering the years 23 and 24. Does that sound?
Yeah, I think, I think that'll work.
Two years, 400,000 so far.
Yeah.
Of course, things could happen.
Things could happen. I mean, obviously bids are coming in high everywhere. We'll have to come back if we exceed that and we should have time.
That's a motion to amend. Can I get a second?
Second, Fiani.
Thank you.
Where is that going?
After the number 10,000 in the first therefore be resolved. Do you see that place?
Okay, yeah.
Then it would be the, the exceeding would be for the 400,000 covering years 23 and 24. Questions, comments, analysis, objections to the amendment that we have a motion and a second for?
I got a question on that. You commented on the potential assessment of 15 to 2,000. Was that? I guess I'm thinking that's a lot. I thought there was 818 residents that were in that area, right? So I would, I guess I was thinking a million dollars, 800. Over how many years would you say that would be? Whatever the bonds floated then?
Yeah. I mean, if we figured it's probably, I'm guessing five or 10 years, you know, interest rates keep going up. So, you know, extending it for longer periods really each up. So if you did it for five years, I, I think we figured about $400 a year, including the assessment and interest rates. But remember is, so that's our portion. So, you know, most of that would actually go to Washington who has more residents in there.
Right.
So.
And I noticed something, this, the, the next be resolved says the authorization extends for a period encompass the years over which the project will be financed. We'd have to just say at that one encompass the years 23 and 24. And then draw a period there.
We might have to come back on that because I don't think that's been, I think that was just blanket. If you find the expenses are occurring earlier, either payback. So I'm not sure why we would need that coverage for the years that speak finance. So.
Well, if there's, then there could be a problem with the bonds eventually that we have to adjust that to.
It could be. Yeah. I'll get more clarification on that. So.
Is everybody following? Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on Commissioner Sample's comment because I was using my calculator on my phone. If it were a million dollar expenditure and about, my understanding about half the properties are in Washington, half are in Livingston. So the Livingston folks, if you took the million and divided by two, we'd be on the hook for 500,000. You divide that by 800, 500,000 by 818 and I come up with $611. So.
That's where I was coming up with where we were at on it. I just didn't know what the interest rate of the bond.
So I think it'll be less than.
It probably will be. Ken always figures pretty high stuff. So we don't get surprised. But yeah, the, I think our feeling is that's going to be a fair amount less than that.
Also, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment, question? Commissioner Gross.
Given the conversation we just had, should, should the amendment also include some language with respect to once a final project number is determined that we could revisit it? Should we consider that? I mean, we're talking ballpark, a million, but you know, if it comes out to 700,000, the, the math changes a little bit and, and is that something that should be addressed in this resolution?
We could say after the, the, the second be it resolved where we ended it at 23, 24 with a, with a comma and that say, and if future or say final, final project costs are determined to be less than a million. If final project costs differ, so they can go up or down. We expect a we expect another resolution.
That, we should have plenty of time to do that. Although the less we talk to the Washington County Water Resources Commissioner, the better because when I talked to him today, he threatened to give us this dam, which we don't want. So, yeah, that's the way.
Where we can be given dams without.
We don't want it. Yeah, annex. Yeah.
Just to make sure we get all those U of M taxpayers.
You're right.
With that.
Mr. Chair, it seems to me that, that your, the purpose of this amendment is to protect the citizens of Livingston County and especially these. And in my mind, they're already well protected by the Drain Commission. In, in my mind, we don't add anything to this project or take away anything from this amendment. I, I think it's an unnecessary amendment personally. We voted no because I think it'll happen, it's going to happen however it's going to happen, no matter how we word an amendment. That's, that's kind of my picture.
Again, this is unusual because you're, you're being asked to approve an amount on a project that really hasn't been designed, hasn't been bid. And so it's kind of, you know, at the very beginning of this, it's a concept and that's what makes it difficult. I don't have a problem with having that and, because we have time to come back and make any modifications with the final one. So I don't, I don't.
But you need this now. You need this now to, to proceed, but the amount may come in under a million or you don't know where that amount is.
Right. But if it's going to come in over the original amount or the amount that's put into the 400,000, I think, then we would come back with a request before we gave that contractor notice to proceed, we'd come back with a request to amend that amount up to 450 or whatever.
That was a good point by Commissioner Gross.
Yeah. So it just doesn't, the prices are going to be whatever the prices are going to be. So I don't know how, and we'll just have to revisit it again. And what if we say no the next time? You know, we really don't.
Yeah.
You know, what, what is our ability to say no, you know, to this?
If you come to the conclusion that none of this makes sense, I think you're on the right track because that's the way the statute is built. It, it really doesn't.
We're dealing with a poor statute.
Very poor statute.
Okay. I will, I'm now seeing no further hands or desire to talk. We'll go into the portion of whether or not the amendment will pass. I believe it can be a voice vote. All those in favor of the amendment kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I'm counting eight to one, the amendment passes. Any further discussion or comment or question now on an amended resolution? 2308-154. Seeing none. I'm trying to determine if we've got.
It's a voice vote.
Is a voice or? Okay. So we're at voice vote for the amended resolution ending 154. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero, the amended resolution passes, known as 154. We're on to then agenda item I, number 2023-08-155. It's a resolution authorizing the improvement improvements to Marion number three drain project and the distribution of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funding. May I get a motion?
Second sample.
Moved by Commissioner Helsman, seconded by Commissioner Sample. Well thought out, well questioned at the fam meeting we all attended. Any further questions, comment, objection or viewpoint? Commissioner Fiani?
I just wanted to briefly note that it looks like on the agenda, it does not call for a roll call vote, but I think that's just a minor oversight. I believe it does require a roll call vote.
Thank you for that point of order. I will take that advice. It doesn't prolong the meeting by hours and hours. All those in favor will respond to the roll call vote by our clerk.
Commissioner Helsman?
Yes.
Chairman Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Dric?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Nine, zero, motion passes.
Thank you. We're on to item J. It's number 2023-08-156. It's a resolution authorizing improvements to Livingston number 22 Drain Project and the distribution of American Rescue Plan Act funding, ARPA. May I get a motion?
Move it.
Moved by Commissioner Domas, support by Commissioner Smith, did I hear? Yes, thank you. Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further questions, comment or analysis beyond fam? Seeing none, this a roll call vote? Clerk will proceed. Thank you.
Commissioner Helsman?
Yes.
Chairman Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Dric?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Nine, zero, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
We're to item K on the agenda, 12K. It's 2023-08-157. It's a resolution authorizing an amendment to resolution 2022-12-203, which then was a one-time inflation assistance payment for and to Livingston County employees. And the resolution calls for a change in the funding source from our general fund to the $10,000 revenue loss allocation of the county's American Rescue Plan Act money funding, also known as ARPA. 10 million. I lost a couple of zeros.
Move the resolution Nakagiri.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Nakagiri, support by Commissioner Smith. Any further questions, comments, analysis? Seeing none, I'll close that portion and go to a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Helsman?
Yes.
Chairman Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Dric?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Nine, zero, motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to item number 13 entitled Accounts Payable Reports. 13A reads claims dated August 28, 2023. 13B reads payables dated August 5 through August 18, 2023. Can I get a motion on both A and B?
Move it. Please.
Both are moved by Commissioner Domas. Both are seconded by Commissioner Deaton. We'll go to voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any objections, any opposed? Seeing none, the tally is nine to zero unanimous passage of 13A and B. We're at item number 14, Call of the Public. At this point of the meeting, per our board rules, the call of the public is limited to two minutes. The first one in the beginning is three. This is two minutes. Are there any cards submitted?
I have one card for Tammy Higgins from Miasco.
Ms. Higgins, please come up to the table.
I'm back. I thought I would be.
When you're ready and comfortable?
But I was coming even to another meeting.
When you're seated, comfortable, ready, you may proceed.
Yes. Just looking, you know, just observing. I see a lot of resolutions, a lot of grant money, a lot of funding for a lot of good things in the county, but I don't see one thing on there for transportation. And I have it for many of the meetings that I've come here. So I just think that's an observation that, have, do you guys talk about it? You know, that one lady asked the question, do you guys talk about transportation and safety in the county?
Unfortunately, we're not here to answer questions.
Oh, I know. I know. That's for you to think about. That's just for you to think about. I know, I understand. I am the Planning Commission Chair of Miasco Township. I understand how the meetings run. But I did, I just, I'm asking you that, to look at that and to, you know, think about that because that's, that's what I see. So I appreciate everything you do. I understand dealing with public. I get it. So don't be afraid of me.
Okay.
Have a good one.
Good. Any further person in the room that would like to participate in the second call to the public?
I have no more cards.
Thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom that's following and listening to my voice? Anybody would like to raise their hand and participate in call to the public number two?
I do not see any commissioner.
Neither do I. That confirms it. Call to the public number two is closed. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move Helsman.
It's moved by Helsman, supported by Deaton. All those in favor kindly respond to a voice vote, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Nine to zero unanimous.